Hey everybody, Robert Preston Jr. here with douglistnow.com. Couple of things I want to talk about this afternoon. As you sign on, let me know if you can see me in the correct orientation. Make sure I'm not sideways or something like that. I've got some new technology, working on a few different things and this, uh, I've tried to, I've tried to use this in a, do these videos with this kind of orientation and it hasn't always worked out, but I've got a new phone, got a few folks on. Am I, am I okay? Am I sideways or anything? Do I have a disembodied head floating around on the screen anywhere? Y'all let me know if I do. I don't see anybody say anything, so we must be, we must be good, uh, good to go. Couple of things I want to talk about this afternoon and try to hit this pretty quickly. And then move on. My children are at home and awake here on this last, you know, the last few days before we go back to school. So I'm hoping that neither one of them will disrupt anything, but who knows? Couple of things I want to get to. First of all, county commission meeting yesterday. And, uh, the commission must have been discussing something extremely important. In an executive session, because normally the executive session runs from eight thirty to nine thirty in the morning. Then, um, then at nine thirty, the, the meeting begins, but it didn't start until after ten o'clock last night. So they were in, or, or yesterday morning, excuse me, they were in executive session for an extra forty-five minutes. They came out, they didn't say what they talked about and I didn't ask. I see a couple of things on, on the agenda that might, I, I, I'm guessing they were dealing with some personnel issues, but anyway, they stayed in executive session for a while. Yesterday was also the first commission meeting for the new commissioner from District Five, Ted Osteen. They swore him in yesterday morning and then he sat in on the meeting for the first time. He didn't say anything and he was just there and I'm quite sure. Might've been wondering exactly what he'd gotten himself into dealing with that extra long executive session. If he did not ask himself that question, he will before too long, I promise you that. Uh, one thing that the, uh, that happened at the meeting yesterday. Um, Juanetta Boulder was, was at the meeting and she introduced the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty mayor's youth council. Juanetta, of course, is a city clerk and there were four members of the mayor's youth council who were at the meeting and who they're making their rounds around town and introducing themselves. And the, uh, the youth council is a pretty neat, um, it's a pretty neat, uh, a pretty neat thing. And gets, gets kids involved in government, gets kids involved in the process. And hopefully they'll see, uh, the reason why it's important to get involved and to serve your community and make a difference. But they were at the county commission meeting yesterday as well. Now, the commission did take action on a few things. First of all, they bought eight new cars for the sheriff's office. They opened the bids for those and Woody Folsom here in Douglas, Woody Folsom Chrysler, got the low bid. Or they submitted a low bid, twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars each. That's not twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars for each car, uh, excuse me, for the total of the eight cars. It's twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars for each of the eight cars. They were the low bid, about a little over three hundred dollars, I guess almost four hundred. The next bid that came in, uh, was Aiken Chrysler. They had the state contract for these cruisers. They submitted a bid of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars. The commission decided to go with the low bid from Woody Folsom here, twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars each. So again, the county will be getting eight new patrol cars. Also opened up, um, bids for two paving projects. One for the Beaver Creek Road project, if you go out to Beaver Creek and you ride through there, you know, toward the end of the road, after you go past where you turn to go, what used to be the clubhouse. You're going around a little bit and the road is dirt out there, so it's a short piece of, of roadway. That's going to be repaved. There were four bids submitted for that. Burke Paving got the contract, a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and eleven cents. That was the low bid. East Coast Asphalt was next with a hundred eighty-one thousand, uh, seven hundred eighty-two dollars, I think that's right. Anyway, a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars and some change, uh, was the next lowest bid. But Burke Paving got that project and paving out there will begin soon. There were two other bids, uh, bids that weren't close. Uh, the county also awarded the bid for the Willow Way project. Again, these are all part of the L-MIG projects, Beaver Creek Road, Willow Way. And then we, we do these here in Coffee County and in the city each, uh, each year. So that's, you know, there's a lot of work that gets done because of, because of this grant process. Uh, but Willow Way is a significantly longer piece of roadway than Beaver Creek was. Allen Owens Construction and Paving submitted a low bid for that, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, seventy dollars and twenty cents. So Allen Owens Construction and Paving will handle the Willow Way paving project. While Burke Paving here in Douglas will handle the Beaver Creek project. So that was pretty much the county commission meeting yesterday. Took them about ten minutes after they kept us waiting for forty-five on the executive session. The county usually runs things pretty, pretty efficiently, but if you live near Beaver Creek Road or you live near Willow Way, you will see those, uh, uh, you know, work on those projects beginning pretty quickly. And also if you happen to notice, you might see in the near future, eight new patrol cars for the sheriff's office. I don't know how long it takes to equip those cars, because as you buy them, you gotta put lights on them. You gotta do all that other stuff, sticker them up and do all that. So I'm guessing it'll take a little while before we get those, but we will have eight new patrol cars. Now, outside of the county commission meeting, there were a few other things that happened over the weekend. First of all, uh, around seven o'clock, just before seven o'clock, a report came in that there was somebody riding through the Walmart parking lot waving a gun. Police responded, found the vehicle out on Bowens Mill Road, made an arrest. It was a sixteen-year-old juvenile. There are, there are differing accounts of what happened. We posted something from the police department's Facebook page yesterday. Police department said that, that the, uh, the juvenile, a male, was riding around waving a gun. It was a, a replica of a Beretta. Other people said it was a BB pistol. Not sure what it was, but a lot of those BB pistols do look very real. And some family member said he was, he had it out and was putting it in the glove department. Somebody saw it, he wasn't waving it around. I don't know. Whatever happened, the juvenile got arrested out on Bowens Mill Road. And I believe he was released to his parents and will have to appear in juvenile court later on. If this was kind of an unusual thing for this particular individual, then that'll work itself out in court. But listen, sorry, got a phone call. I know people, you know, people think it's funny to mess around with guns and things like that. But as we see in, in our society today and again, with what happened over the weekend with a couple of mass shootings and, and you know, you don't, you don't play around with guns. And I tell my kids, and I've got a sixteen-year-old, a thirteen-year-old, both of them know how to shoot. Both of them know how to handle a gun. Don't ever play around with a gun. Don't ever act like you're gonna shoot somebody. Don't ever wave it. Don't ever pull it out in public. Not that my children would have a gun in public, but if we're in a vehicle, we've been hunting or something like that. Don't mess with it, because it's a really good way to get yourself shot by law enforcement or by, or, or by someone who is, is carrying a gun and, and you know, for their own protection. And they see somebody doing something with a gun, that's how people get shot. And I, I, I don't know that this juvenile intended any harm. He may have been just putting it up. He may have looked over and seen it on the seat. He picked it up, held it up too high, was gonna put it in the glove department. I don't know. But at any rate, it, it was something that got him in trouble and he'll learn from this. You don't do it again, but you can't take any chances anymore. So a lot of people were talking about that over the weekend and that's what it was. Sixteen-year-old juvenile had a fake gun, BB gun, something that somebody saw in Walmart. Was in a vehicle and pulled him over and he was charged, but released to his parents and he'll appear. Sorry, got another phone call. Now, speaking of shootings, there was a shooting this weekend in Douglas. I was out of town and started getting phone calls and text messages about it around nine o'clock Saturday night. I was in Florida, there was nothing I could do, um, except follow the tips and try to post a little something. The GBI is investigating, uh, this particular shooting. Sheriff's Department called the GBI in to help investigate. We posted a story about it this morning. GBI sent a press release out late yesterday afternoon. The, not a lot of information in it, as is typical with GBI press releases. They don't usually give very much information at all. Uh, but the shooting victim was Michael Jerome Williams. He's twenty-one years old. Call came in that there had been shots fired out on Poplar Street in the Oak Park area. Officers responded and they found Mr. Williams actually in a vehicle at a convenience store, I believe. He had, uh, uh, he had been shot, one gunshot wound and he was taken to Coffee Regional for treatment. I heard Saturday night arrests had been made, that they had a couple of people in custody. Did not, um, uh, did not say in the press release if anyone had been arrested. All it says is the investigation is ongoing. So, uh, so again, uh, there was a shooting. There were some people, there were some people who were making comments that there hadn't been a shooting, that they lived out in the area. They hadn't heard anything, hadn't seen anything, that kind of thing. But there was in fact a shooting that took place. And, uh, again, the victim, Michael Jerome Williams, uh, taken to Coffee Regional for treatment. Uh, apparently he survived his wounds, uh, or the shooting thankfully. And that investigation is continuing. So if you have any information, please let the, uh, please let the, the GBI or sheriff's office know. Tonight, at South Georgia State College, Night Out Against Crime, okay? Police Department is sponsoring this. The State Patrol helicopter is gonna be at the college. There're gonna be public safety vehicles, they're gonna be giving out free back-to-school supplies. They're gonna be doing free IDs for kids. It's gonna take place there at the gym. They call it the Wellness Center. It's a gym where the indoor pool is, four to seven PM. The pool was the place where it was advertised, advertised as being at the pool. So I assume that the pool will be open and people will be able to swim. I do not know that for a fact, but if I were going, I would at least take a towel and, uh, and have that in case you can go swimming. But it will be at the pool again. If they can land the helicopter out there, I guess they'll land it either on the long side of the pool or they'll land it there in the parking lot. Be pretty cool, alright? So there'll be some neat stuff going on. I'll tell you what, Chief Edmundston is really trying to get his officers out and interact with the community. He's also doing some neat stuff with the officers. And if you look around town, you'll notice there is a greater police presence in the city of Douglas. You see more cars, you see more lights. I don't necessarily know that more tickets are being written. Uh, because the idea is not to get out here and write tickets for everybody, but certainly with police presence, uh, people do tend to be a little more diligent in what they're doing and pay more attention to their speed and stopping at stop signs and not going through yellow lights and things like that. And of course also traffic stops yield a lot of contraband and a lot of people who have warrants on them. So the police chief is trying to get his officers out in front of the community a lot of different ways. But this, this SGSC, uh, event tonight, Night Out, National Night Out Against Crime is gonna be pretty neat. So if you need school supplies, if your kids need ID, if you just wanna go out there and look at a helicopter and look at the different police cars and what have you, interact with the police officers. See them in a different arena than we usually encounter. Wayne Granton says they interacted with me a few minutes ago. I saw two of them interacting with truck drivers out on one fifty-eight a little while ago. One big truck, they were, one was headed to Walmart, one was headed from Walmart out on one fifty-eight. One going east, one going west, right in front of Wiregrass. There were two different police officers. One had the one going east pulled over, the other one had the one going west pulled over. Um, so they're interacting with people today, uh, today as well in, in the city. But, uh, but anyway, the officers are out, um, in a lot of different areas, doing a lot of different things. But the Night Out Against Crime will be a pretty neat event tonight. If you wanna go out there and check it out again from four to seven PM at South Georgia State College. Speaking of the college, school starts next Monday, I do believe, six more days from today. And then of course, school starts here in the Coffee County School System on Friday. Open House for the High School, I believe, is today. Um, check that and make sure. Then Open House will follow up the elementary schools and the middle schools and what have you throughout the rest of the week. So go out to, to Open House, check it out, get ready. Pay attention to school buses, know what to do when you see a school bus stop, which is of course, you stop as well. Once those flashing lights come out, you stop. Um, and, uh, golly, Friday's gonna be, you know, Fridays are always tough. Fridays are going to be an absolute nightmare this week. Everybody getting to school, people taking their kids to school. If you're out on the connector around the middle school or a little bit farther north up around the high school, if you're not taking kids to school, you might wanna avoid the area. You might wanna find a different, um, a different route, an alternative route through there, because traffic's gonna be backed up in both directions, uh, around the middle school, I know, for quite a while. And it doesn't matter how early you go, you can't get there early enough. It's gonna be bad. So if you're caught up in the traffic, just relax, take a breath and ride it out. That's all you can do. You can get mad and fuss and blow the horn and get upset and talk ugly and do all that. It's not gonna help. You're stuck there till the traffic moves. Our officers at the middle school do a good job of directing track, traffic, of trying to keep it flowing as much as possible. But you got that many people in that small of an area all at one time, it's not gonna go very smoothly, okay? So especially on the first day, so be patient on Friday, alright? Let the kids get to school, let them do what they need to do. Um, and, and you know, again, I wouldn't ride by the middle school if I didn't have to on, uh, if I didn't have to on Friday. But I have a child at the middle school, also have a child at high school, so I will be in both places on Friday. And it's not a question of if we're gonna be late, it's gonna be a question of how late are we gonna be? One of them's gonna be late, there's no way around it. So again, I think the teachers are pretty laid back and administrators are pretty laid back on that on the first day of school. One thing I want to mention, and I've, I've sort of debated about this. And I, we had two mass shootings over the weekend. And I generally don't say very much about this kind of stuff, because common sense and good sense usually gets thrown to the wind when these types of things happen. Because no matter which side of the gun control debate you're on, no matter which side of the political spectrum you're on, most people typically use these types of incidents to push their agenda, okay? And the aftermath, I think, of these things, a lot of times is a reflection to some degree of what causes them in the first place. Now, I'm not, I don't wanna, uh, I don't wanna deal with a lot of the gun control stuff and, and, and all that. I wish, I wish that when something like this happened, we could take emotions out of it. And I'm not sure that we can, just by the sheer nature of what's, of what takes place. But when you're, particularly when you're dealing with young adults, if you're dealing with children in this case of a school shooting, emotions are obviously going to run, run high. But I like to take, to take these kinds of things and look at them through the lens of the big picture. And see, you wanna do something, but you don't wanna react for the sake of reacting and put more laws and more restrictions on the books that aren't going to do any good. Now, when you look at these mass shootings, the shooters themselves, always, it doesn't matter whether it's a school shooting, whether it's a workplace shooting, um, whether it's white, black, male, female, what have you. There are some things that go, there are some common threads that run through them. First of all, the individual who, who commits these, these acts, the individuals usually have experienced some type of trauma as a child, okay? And it could be physical trauma, it could be emotional trauma, it could be both. But there's some traumatic event in their childhood, okay? It could be bullying, you know, it could be at the hands of parents, it could be at the hands of teachers, it could be at the hands of people close to them, okay? But there's always some, some traumatic event that happened in their childhood. There were also warning signs. In every single case, there were warning signs that had people picked up on and had people acted on properly, they could have avoided this. There was actually a story that I read, I either read it last night or this morning, uh, of a grandmother who stopped a potential mass shooting in Lubbock, Texas. I don't know if anybody saw this or not, but she had seen some things that her grandson had written and he had made some comments about buying guns and stockpiling weapons and ammunition and things like that. And that he was going to use them in a mass shooting, uh, for, for a mass shooting. And she took him to the hospital. She loaded him up, took him to seek treatment, called the police and they stopped it. And they found out that yes, he had, I forget how many hundreds of rounds of ammunition. He had, I believe, an AK-47 style rifle. He had handguns, shotguns. He had a lot of weapons, a lot of ammunition, and he was going to use them in a mass shooting in Lubbock. This goes back a few weeks ago. Uh, but because the grandmother saw it, she recognized the warning signs and intervened. She was able to stop a potentially catastrophic event, okay? These shooters usually have some type of manifesto that they've written in some way. Some treatise or some paper or some statement, whether it's on social media or, uh, or, or in a journal or somewhere. They've written down what they're going to do and why they're going to do it. And I certainly think the operative thing to do is to recognize those warning signs and then act on them. I know people don't always want to, want to, to, to overreact and I'm not an alarmist typically in the way that I react to things on a day-to-day basis. I try not to be an alarmist, but we live in a day and age where you almost have to be now, okay? Because when people say they're gonna do something, when people say, you know, people make, they don't make idle threats anymore, okay? They don't, you know, and then we see this time and again. I'm gonna add something else here. I think that we live in a time where hate rules the day. And we see hate everywhere. And I'm not talking about necessarily, you know, racism and sexism and all the other isms that are out there. Hate doesn't really fall within the nice confines of any, um, uh, of any nice little box or little ism that we wanna put it in, okay? It permeates everything. And if you get anything out of this, take note here. People hate with more intensity than they love. People hate with more intensity than they love. And when we see a very tense and stressful political situation right now, we hear a lot of rhetoric and we hear a lot of hyperbole and we hear people making grandiose statements, large sweeping statements about folks on both sides. A lot of times, the outcome justifies, or the perceived outcome justifies however you want to go about reaching that outcome. I was gonna say that the end justifies the means, but I think it's a little more complicated than that. Um, I think you also have to take, along with the hatred, you have to take the celebrity that people can get from social media. Uh, and the vindication that people feel like they can get from committing some type of act that again reinforces the hate that we see in, you know, all around us. And the aftermath of the shooting, particularly in Texas, you're seeing more and more of that, okay? The president would like to go to Texas. He said he would want to go to Texas and visit families and what have you. He's being told to stay away. And he's not just being told to stay away. He's being told to stay away with some very, very, uh, blunt and borderline offensive means. Same thing is happening up in the shoe, with the shooting in Ohio. And what we have are people talking out of both sides of their mouth. People talk about love, people talk about healing, people talk about coming together. People talk about compromising and let's meet on common ground and, you know, let's focus on our similarities and not our differences, you know? We're far more, we're, we're far more similar than we are different. If we can just find those areas of common ground and let's build on those and not focus on our differences, then, then we'll be okay. But nobody wants to do it. That's what people say. But the practical application and what we see in our society is that all we talk about are how we're different. All we talk about are that which divides us. And we do it, and, and this is kinda funny. What keeps me restrained in my day-to-day, um, in my, my day-to-day, day life is the fact that I realize there are lines that I can cross that somebody's liable to punch me in the nose. And if I'm not ready to get punched in the nose, I don't cross that line, alright? And I tell my kids that. Zane always messes with me. He'll come up and start hitting on me and messing around with me and talk a little junk, you know how thirteen-year-olds are. And, and when, when he does that, I ask him, are you ready for what's about to happen? You know, are you ready? Cause we'll go as far as you want to with this, but you just need to be ready. And he always laughs and, you know, kinda ends it right there. I don't make statements and don't do things. I try not to. If I'm not willing to, uh, face the consequences of, of what, of what I say, okay? Now, what does that have to do with our discussion? Social media removes those barriers. When you're talking on Facebook, when you're sending out tweets, when you're using the various other social media platforms, you can say what you want to say pretty much without fear of repercussions, okay? Because you're not face-to-face, you make somebody mad and depending on where you live, you may not ever see them again. So you can make these outlandish, grandiose statements and use all this hyperbole and exaggerate and in many cases outright lie and just say horrible things about people without any repercussions whatsoever. And I think that has something to do with how people react, okay? And I don't like it, because you need to use restraint. There needs to be accountability. And when I'm sitting here from, you know, from my standpoint, accountability keeps people from doing stupid things, okay? We live in a time when accountability is less and less important to people. And we've seen several of our leaders say that, you know what? As long as I get my point across, it doesn't matter if I lie. It doesn't matter who I vilify. It doesn't matter what I say, as long as I get my point across, okay? And I think that extends to some of the violence that we see. As long as I make a statement, as long as I'm perceived as a martyr, it doesn't matter what I do, as long as I prove my point. And with a lot of these mass shootings, I don't know what the point is. And I honestly, I don't believe anything of what I read, cause I, you know, I've read, uh, Facebook posts about, about the, uh, the, the shooting, uh, the shootings in Texas and in Ohio. And I'll see posts about the shooter, particularly in Texas. You know, he was a Trump supporter, he was a conservative, he was this, this, this and this. And I'll see another post about the same shooter. He was a Democrat, he was a socialist, he was this, and I, and I don't know. I, I don't know who to believe, I don't know what to believe. What I tend to think is he was a disturbed individual who did not know how to express himself, maybe had been ignored. Maybe because of the, I always talk about the perceived anonymity of the internet, but there's also perceived celebrity that comes with some of this stuff. Because of that, this is how he felt like he could best get his point across. It doesn't matter which side of the political spectrum is on, there were warning signs on both, on both shooters. And there were warning signs in all of them. The reason is, is because normal, sane individuals don't do this kind of stuff. So for those who dismiss the mental health side of things and want to, and want to lessen the impact it has and yet overemphasize, I think, the gun control debate, or the gun laws debate, um, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that you should do that. Listen, you go back and look at the history of mental health in our country. Through the sixties, seventies and eighties, well, it really started, I guess, in the seventies. Uh, there began a movement to de-institutionalize facilities. Now, we all grew up making jokes, probably bad jokes, but making jokes about the mental hospital in Milledgeville, you know? That was what everybody heard about. And we had, had a friend of ours who moved to Milledgeville when, when we were in high school. And oh, the jokes that we made and they went along with it, it was pretty funny. But you know, Milledgeville became synonymous with the institution, okay? There's, there's not an institution there anymore, okay? Because the movement became to de-institutionalize the hospitals. But when they de-institutionalized the hospitals, the hospitals they put people who needed to be institutionalized out in the public and the number of mental health services decreased and you saw homelessness go up and you see these incidents of violence go up and you see drug use go up and you see all kinds of stuff go up okay I think the mental health system needs to be overhauled I don't know that we necessarily need to you know round people up and send them back to hospitals but something needs to be done but there are people who need to be institutionalized there are people who can't take care of themselves there are people who can't function in society and the trick with mental health the tricky thing about mental health is that the drugs are very effective so when people take drugs and they stabilize and normalize themselves they begin to feel like after a period of time they don't need to take their medicine anymore there's nothing wrong with me why am I taking this well again common sense dictates that the reason you're feeling good the reason you're normal is because you're taking the medicine if you stop taking it you're gonna go back to you know your condition is gonna flare up again but people don't always realize that so they end up relapsing if you will and it causes all kinds of problems it's not you know it's not a quick simple and easy fix but I think you take all of these issues you roll them up together and you add in the hate that we have in our in our country this is what you get I'm not trying to lay blame I just think this is the way it is all of these shootings are preventable they're all preventable what are they preventable with are they preventable with more gun control laws I doubt it I was thinking about like this this may be a bad analogy I use bad analogies from time to time but once you let something out of the bag it's hard to put it back in for example if everybody who had toothpaste started squirting toothpaste out all over town alright and you ban the sale of toothpaste is that going to keep you from putting the toothpaste that's out back into the tubes and once toothpaste is out it's not coming back in so while you might can stop more toothpaste from being sold you can't round up what's already been out what's already out there and put it back in the tubes alright I kinda look at the gun control debate the same way you can pass laws you can restrict gun control or excuse me restrict gun sale uh you can get people to turn their guns in and a lot of law abiding citizens would do that if there was a you know if that if that was a law but the criminals aren't gonna turn their guns in and it's not just folks here in the United States we have guns coming in and we have weapons coming in from outside of our country there's a lot of money in that okay and weapons traffickers I mean you see it on movies all the time but it happens so in fact if you outlaw guns you're only gonna make guns more desirable and you're not gonna get rid of them the people who wanna commit these acts are going to and they're also gonna find other ways to do it as well because there are other ways to kill people without guns and you see it you've seen it a gazillion times okay if somebody wants to hurt someone they will there are plenty of ways to do it I don't necessarily think that gun control is the way to do it I think that you and and in order to truly solve the problem I guess this is the take home message I think you have to take the emotions out of it you have to take the politics out of it you have to take the power out of it you have to take the ruling class out of it because the ruling class is jockeying for position and Democrat or Republican liberal or conservative those in the ruling class will not let a single catastrophe or a single crisis go unwasted they will use whatever they can to try to boost their base boost their influence uh and hold on to power and that's what we're seeing right now they can need to take the emotions out of it take the politics out of it and let's truly look at it and see what we can do to stop these shootings from happening in the future they're all preventable and I think it would be easier to prevent than uh than we're making it out of because you don't they don't wanna do the easy thing they wanna do the political thing they wanna do that which will expand their power and expand their influence and I don't like that I don't like that at all you know when the government passes a law that restricts freedom in some way now there's some freedoms that need to be restricted some laws that need to be passed okay but I get really aggravated when a very very small uh percentage of the population does something and people react um swiftly but a lot of times without a lot of forethought and what ends up happening is the law abiding majority is affected far more than the law breaking minority I don't like that uh I don't like that at all but you know I think there's some there's some things that we could do to stop this stuff moving forward but again you know the emotional arguments the political stuff and this is what I talk about you know the election we just had I mean I almost if we didn't use Facebook here for Douglas now I would rather not be I would rather not be on Facebook I would rather not be on social media because I get tired of all the junk that I see I get tired of the politi- of politics politics I get tired of the uh um of the same tired and worn out arguments I you know do you do any good by arguing politics on Facebook I mean really you ever change nobody nobody's ever changed my mind let me back up one person there was one post on immigration that made me think and it was a far different post than what I'd ever seen before um but out of the millions of posts I've seen one made me think and it wasn't from anybody around here one post made me think didn't really change my mind just made me think a little bit but we have opportunities to vote we have opportunities to to participate in the political process we have opportunities to get involved locally look our 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 city commission our county commission our school board needs involvement they need people there they need the accountability that I just talked about that takes time that takes effort that takes getting involved people don't wanna do that it's a whole lot easier to type up something on Facebook or to share a meme or something like that and then move on I wish we would get involved take time to vote take time to pay attention to what's happened politically and demand accountability from our leaders if we do that I think then we would see uh our society improve in general we demand that people quit hating each other quit hating if you truly wanna focus on our similarities focus on our similarities alright quit getting in all this political mess and oh geez anyway let me get off of that rant don't hate ultimately that's what's causing all these problems anyway that's what's going on in Douglas thus far this week thank you guys for watching did not mean to uh to go on this long but uh if something happens if there's another shooting if there's anything else going on good or bad we will let you know again you wanna go out to the college tonight and check out uh all that'll be going on out there four to seven PM it's almost two o'clock so a little over two hours I'll start go getting uh uh start gathering at the college go out there and check it out four to seven at the gym uh you know again they call it the wellness center uh but the gym the pool complex look for the helicopter there'll only be one on campus go there y'all have a great afternoon anything changes anything happens anything breaks we will let you know thanks again for watching